Hello, everybody. Good to see you all. Call this meeting the Shoreham Town Council to order. Today is Wednesday, December 3rd. It is 3:02 PM. We start today with our guests and lobbyists, Jeff Taylor and Rick McCollum. Jesus Christ, I know it as well as I know my own name. So why don't you guys come up? Why don't you guys come up, right? Amy, Amy's gonna walk through this part of the meeting. But yeah. And when you, when you, when you guys, when you guys speak, just you have to push the button so the green light is on. How are you guys? First of all, thank you for the work you did for us last session. I don't think we've ever had as extensive an agenda. And you guys really executed for us. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And the report was appreciated.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I can get started very quickly if that's appropriate.
Yeah. Hi, Molly.
I'm gonna yield to my colleague Jeff. We're gonna go over what happened. What would like to do is go over what place legislative session. Then I'm gonna go and speak a little bit.
Sorry. It had a green light on, but you forgot, you forgot my name. So I said, I forget, I guess I can get the mic. No, I'm just kidding. No, I, but anyway, Jeff is gonna kind of go over what happened in the legislative session this year. I'm gonna talk a little about some of the federal issues that are going on, plus the state budget and so forth. But let me just acknowledge Amy Land. Great relationship working with her. We have conversations, if not every week, at least every 10 days, sometimes multiple ones during the week, depending on what the crisis is. We'd had conversations recently as last Tuesday after, or last Monday after the conversation with DOT. So conversation's been really good. Really happy to be working with Amy. And that's where our conversations and our work go through. So what we'll do is Jeff is gonna lay out what happened in 2025. And then we can kind of go from there, what we're doing after. So just to kind of recapitulate what he sent you.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon in front of you all to give you just a kind of overview, a little bit of what we did on behalf of the community, Block Island, New Shoreham, and last session. Talk a little bit, if you had any questions. I know, as you just mentioned, you got the final report. So if there's any questions as a result of what was presented, and it was probably a while ago. I'm gonna run through quickly the four priorities that we focused on for Block Island that we were successful in moving through the legislature. And I know one of those involves some regulatory. You know, if you have any updates on, you know, particular, I'll jump right into it, the adoption of the new property tax classification, which we were, you know, got through, which is an enabling act, which many communities are required to do when you look at changing some of the classifications on the property tax side of the equation for municipalities. And this one that we put forward was allowing New Shoreham to take a look at non-owner and owner occupied properties to designate a different tax classification. So I'm not sure if you've taken that up yet. That's up to the council to take a look at that and whatever subcommittees are evaluating that. It's, there's no timeline on it. You have the ability to do that at any point. But if there are any questions, and that was pretty, pretty straightforward with respect to what moved through the legislature for that initiative. The second was taking a look at the Water District and some of the challenges that the island was facing with expanding services to areas of the island that were probably, when they looked at it, were somewhat cost prohibitive. You're not the only community where that was coming up. And we got embroiled in a little bit of an issue with that. And luckily, we were able to navigate through that legislation. There were two competing bills, or not was it competing? Two, two bills, one from Jamestown and one from New Shoreham, that were seeking the same authority of the Water District to be able to service a designated area. And then outside that designated area, either they were not serviceable or there was, it would be additional charge that we required in order to have that interconnection. Whoever ended up drafting the bill when they both went down, they lumped us in together with Jamestown. A little bit of an issue because Jamestown has about four lawsuits going on that were really challenging some of the decisions made at the local level. Just a quick story, we showed up at the hearing and there were about eight lawyers that were there from Jamestown who were inquiring about why New Shoreham was on this. And I happened to overhear them and told them we'd be happy to separate ourselves out from their bill. And they were happy to hear that, too. So we were good and successful in working with our legislators. And I'll give some support and props to both Representative Tina Spears and Senator Alonzo Mario in helping us navigate to get those bills separated once we realized there was some challenges on that front. Two more bills moved through. One was, you know, relatively easy, but you never know up there when it comes to municipal bonds. We were able to move through the school referendum bond, which gives the community about 10 point, it was 10.4 million for school rebuild or renovation, however you deem, you deem is your approach to fixing the schools. And then finally, which is a good sign for the, for the island in increasing some revenue sources to be consistent with some changes that took place from the town. And now against it, we were able to increase the landing fee 50 cents for a total dollar, a full dollar charge on that landing fee for the island. Just so you know, it had been quite a while since that fee had been increased. And when we testified in asking for the legislative authority to move that up by 50 cents, some legislators said, you know, what took you so long? And I'm surprised that's all you're asking for. So we don't want to be greedy, but just keep that in mind as we take a look at, you know, potentially down the road. May not wait, I don't know, Amy, was it 15 years? Might have been longer than that, 25 years?
15, 20.
25 years. So, you know, we don't want to get greedy, but at the same time, we may take a look and reevaluate that at some point to take a look at what we're looking at, particularly maybe not so much other ones, but maybe other island communities know what they may be charging also. So those are the key legislative priorities that we focused on and were successful with in moving through in this legislative session. So any questions on those or anything that was included in the report? I'm happy to address.
Can you explain whatever happened and how you became the Taylor Swift bill?
I think that's on the agenda for some items. I'm happy to talk about it now. I believe it was on the list of a few issues you wanted to get into. I'm happy to address it now, if you'd like.
He didn't have the budget, that was a bill.
Correct.
Yeah, so just, so just on this, I think everyone can hear us, but just so we're aware on this, because I think this is playing a, what we're gonna do next year. There's a group of communities that we created, not, I guess, a conference call that we met various times over the last year, including not just us, but Newport, Middletown, Westerly, Narragansett, tourist communities, coastal communities, and so forth. The purpose of those calls was to specifically look at rental rentals. Not once was a state property tax. That's what I'm calling it because it's not, people can call it Taylor Swift tax. And I think we gotta be careful calling it that because when you say Taylor Swift tax, you have this belief that these are multimillion dollar, you know, 35, 40 million dollar homes. That's not what it was. This is a $1 million threshold. And any, any nickel over a million dollars gets taxed. So the first million doesn't get taxed, but anything after that? We don't want to get into that. The bigger issue that we were concerned about, and we're still opposed to it, and we talk about that when we get there, is the fact that Rhode Island, a state should not be doing property taxes. They're not in the business doing property taxes. That's what community wants to. If this community wants to, if the town of Wesley wants to do a tax like that, that's up to them, but certainly not up. So that's one of the things we'll work on. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead of that. But just so you know, at the end of session, I guess this plays into what I was gonna talk about. So the state had an unprecedented amount of money, as you know, over the last couple of years, both from the, the American Rescue Plan Act, some COVID money and some other stuff. We were able, fortunately, in Block Island to take advantage of that, money for the medical center, money for the fire bond and so forth. But that money has dried up. And so for the first time, the rubber hit the road where some of the programs and investments they made no longer had money to help pay for that. So by the end of the year, they had to make decisions on what to do. At no point did we feel that this was gonna go through it. Most legislators didn't know. The way the process works is that there was a briefing by the legislative leadership, the Speaker and the Senate President and the finance chairs. And then that was, that took place around 6:30, 7 o'clock at night. About two hours later, the House Finance Committee voted on the bill. In that bill were a number of things that we didn't expect to see in there. And I say we, Jeff and I, but I think if you talk to legislators or other people up there, they would say the same thing. This was one of them. Another one was a 7% tax on parking garages. Another one was a tax on health plans to help fund more money to bring in primary care physicians and so forth. Again, not disparaging any of those measures, but it wasn't the input that we have. The reason I bring that up is talking to Amy, we plan on bringing, convening this group again, which is made up of town managers and some legislators to see if, how we can address repeal, change a state property tax that should be the onus of a municipality for their community. And that's, that's where we are on it.
Is the, is the League of City and Towns, which supported it foolishly in the beginning? Are they part of this group now or?
Yeah, we can consult with the League of Cities and Towns. And we fully anticipate that the group that we're working with will be reaching out to cities and towns. I think we were as bewildered as maybe you were when we saw the League of Cities and Towns testify on the legislative proposal that was put forth. And eventually it became part of the budget. So I think, yeah, I think we certainly need to be able to consult with League of Cities and Towns. I'm not sure, based on our outreach, where their rationale was coming from supporting that from the legislator, the original legislative proposal. But as Rick mentioned, when it got put in the budget, it caught a lot of people off guard.
And so the League of Cities and Towns sent out an email, and I won't say last week, and they discussed what they thought, what they thought were gonna be priorities for 2026, but they were gonna meet with the towns, and that has not happened yet. So I don't want to throw it on Amy, but the town, League of Cities and Towns having a meeting to talk to town managers and so forth about what the agendas will be for next year. And I think obviously that's something to discuss.
Part of the original legislation, our reps had signed on to that, which was disturbing. And I, and I know we need to move forward, okay? And it, and for whatever reason it was, I can't stress how important this is for this community, the impact for Block Island and I'm sure for a handful of other communities. I agree 100% with you that the, besides the dollar amount, when it might be the precedent of having the, you know, the only thing they used to have was vehicles at one time, but other vehicles, the state has never done that. And I think that precedent is a really dangerous door. Not only what's been presented here, but other ones that might happen from that end of it. So.
No, Congressman, you're 100% right. And I, I will tell you, what your concerns that you gave to both Jeff and I about the sponsorships of those legislation, I can tell you, before we even got on the ferry going back to Narragansett, we called both legislators and explained that. I'm not here to defend them. I think both of them were looking at the housing issue, which I think everybody here agrees is housing issues, not just on the island, but around the state. The vehicle in which to do it was not the right one. And again, I want to be very clear, and I want to also be very careful that our opposition, the town's opposition, is to a responsibility that a municipality should be doing. We don't want to get into defending, in this day and age, unfortunately, we don't want to go defending, you know, multi-billion dollar homes and so forth. I'm not, not, we're not in the business of doing that. What we want to defend is, the reality is that communities base their revenue on property taxes, and that's always been a municipal thing. So.
We don't, I don't believe that there is a house on the market on Block Island, just to give you some sense.
Oh, yeah.
That would not be eligible for this treatment should a particular type of buyer purchase it.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's, it's, you know, Providence doesn't have a lot of seasonal revenues. So, you know, I'm assuming that's where cities and towns were coming from. They're sort of like, oh, here's an opportunity we're gonna have to raise.
But, but I will tell you, I'll tell you, Keith, that Jeff and I were talking about this before you came in here. Take away coastal communities. There's communities in Warwick and East Greenwich and Barrington and Smithfield and so forth, where the homes are $700,000, $800,000 within a year or two, they will, you know, the way the market goes. And so, so we don't want to get in an argument about the value of homes. We want to get in the argument of it's not the right, property taxes should be taxed by the municipality, which by the way, the General Assembly still has oversight to get, and you know, you can't just raise property values 25%. There's a process you have to go through with the state as well, so.
I agree, I agree with your strategic approach as far as the station would be taxing. But I think on, aside from that, I do think that there is an issue about the, about the disproportion of how the tax goes. I think it goes by evaluation. We're not talking about sale. It's a property evaluation. And I would contend that property evaluation is not equal amongst all towns based on mill rates and everything else from that end of it. So while I think that from a street point of view, I, I agree with you going, but I don't think we can, we need to keep those other, those other issues and have the stats numbers for that because I think when you look at what the, the actual impact is, it becomes, it is an equitable, you know, for collection.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I, I appreciate every person on this council's defense of that argument because the reality is you're speaking on behalf of 95 to 98% of the people who live on the island whose homes are valued over a million dollars. So I understand that.
I think, I just want to add to what Bill's saying, too, something that, that you guys need to know that clearly our representative and senator did not have at the forefront when they voted for this is that about 70% of our homes are not owner occupied year round. So they, they might be 80% of the year, 60% of the year. But as Keith said, every home, I did not pay a million dollars for my home. Right? But my home is valued over a million dollars. I could not buy my home right now. And I think pretty much I'm looking at everybody in this room right now. Everybody in this room who has a home, it's a multi-generational home or a home that they've had longer than mine. I've had mine for 30 years, right? So the, we are, we are not really responsible for the escalation of the value. Neither are, so that's, that's really where it becomes this problem. And again, I agree with what you said. Having the fact that people nicknamed it the Taylor Swift tax, it completely obscured what was really good. But it obscured what was going on. And also, there is no other town in the state, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm gonna say there is no other town in the state that has 70% of their homes ensnared in this net, the way that we do. And the fact that, according to Amy, none of this money is coming back to us is, it's predatory. The state is being predatory to Block Island. And the other complication we have is that while we saw this and you saw this, nobody in town did. There was nobody in town who came up to me eight months ago and said, I'm really worried about that Taylor Swift tax. But I'm telling you, I can't get my hair cut right now. I can't walk in the grocery store right now without hearing about it because now that it's passed and now that the real estate agents are aware of it and it, and the information is filtering out, like.
I will say this, Jeff and I spoke to the legislative leadership. After Bill and Nancy spoke at that last council meeting about the sponsors, we spoke, I don't know if I said it before we got onto the ferry, but we went up to the legislative leaders' offices and expressed our concern on the legislation as it was written. Again, the press conference was the first time we heard about it and they voted on the bill, too.
I also want, I want the record to be clear that while I wasn't happy with our representatives, they were responsive. When we met, I think they grasped a bigger. So we're moving forward on that. Yeah, so, no, but I want for anyone to understand that our representatives, when we had our meeting, they heard our concern. And I think that was, you know, that made a change in things from that end of it. So.
But that's part of, part of our, too, to educate. So let me go to the second piece, because I know we want to talk about 2026. That's one of the things. Just quickly, as I mentioned earlier, the money has dried up in Washington. The state has increased its spending about 10.9% over the last five years with investments because of the federal dollars and they've had and so forth. But again, there is a major problem because they don't have the revenue that came in. They actually had a surplus that they use to help pay off this current fiscal year we're in. They actually were within, they found another $20 million. But on July 1 of next year, which will be the FY27 budget, which is the one that we'll be working on, the legislature will be working on, that we'll be, have to live with. We're expecting about $300 million deficit. So they need to find $300 million in the budget to have a balanced budget. It's compounded by the fact that the, that Washington, the president and the Congress voted to severely cut back on Medicaid. Rhode Island will lose $4 billion in the next 10 years. About 300,000 Rhode Islanders, about 30% of our state, are Medicaid. We are slightly above the national average, but we are just like states like New York, Massachusetts, Louisiana, Alabama have the same type of amount of people on Medicaid. So it's north, south, blue, red. But the reality is, we have to figure out, the state has to figure out if they're gonna do one or two things. Are they gonna find revenue to make sure that those people that are eligible for Medicaid? And again, Medicaid are people who are working poor, are sick, are young, the parents, mother or father, single parents who don't have enough income to be at a certain level. Are they handicapped or are they seniors? That's Medicaid population. So that will affect us no matter what because we have to find a way either to cut the services and less people on Medicaid, or find the money to do that. My guess is a combination of both. Included in that is about 30,000 Rhode Islanders who rely on the Affordable Care Act that potentially could be taken off that. As we know, the new premiums begin in January. The reason I bring all that stuff up is how you have to address that affects how you address the rest of the budget. And so that's kind of where we are, you know, where the state is. Last thing is, it's an election year. Not our job to talk about who wins, who loses, but the reality is you're, you are gonna be dealing with a variety of comments next year and reactionary legislation or reactionary measures to, to public statements who are running, people who are running for office for governor or other areas. And there's a number of people potentially that are in power now that may have to make decisions that could be political as well. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we are. You know, Jeff highlighted the stuff for 25. It's kind of where we are. But I, one last thing on the federal piece, I know we want to put more on the state. The continuing resolution in Washington ends January 30th. So government will shut down again on 30th. They don't come to agreement. There are a couple of things that are not in play. The agricultural appropriation has passed through the year. So things like SNAP benefits, that won't affect anybody because that, that appropriation has passed. The VA has also passed, and I think legislative branch. So there's three that have passed, but there's, there's another 10 that have not passed. And so that'll come to fruition again in, in January. So that's kind of what's going on in Washington. But there's a lot of work to be done. And so that's kind of laying it out. I think Jeff and I are here to listen to some ideas and thoughts. I don't listen to anything.
Sure. No, I just wanted to highlight, actually, I know there's a few items that want to discuss.
Sure. No, I just wanted to highlight, actually, I know there's a few items that want to discuss about twenty-six. But on the positive side, so I'm gonna talk about something positive right now. Um. Rick talked about, um, you know, some of the federal actions. One of the, one of the big ticket items that moved through from the feds this year. Was in response to some cuts they made on, on the proposed Medicaid side and SNAP and some of the other social services. There was a bill um that went through with appropriation of fifty billion, that's with a B, fifty billion dollars for a program called. The Rural Health Transformation uh Program. And they are releasing funds from that program in two tranches. A twenty-five billion dollar in the first go around and the second, a twenty-five billion dollar, I think in the next calendar year. The first twenty-five million dollars was available for every fif- all fifty states. And they were required to submit an application proposal of focused on programs and initiatives that could benefit rural health.
In newly.
And newly, right, correct.
The rural is newly.
Newly defined, right. So I do mention that because the good news is. New Shore is technically the only rural health designated community under the federal definition. Now, the state and the feds have looked at other areas of, in regions in Rhode Island. Where they've gotten a little flexible and they qualify it under definitions. The good news is, your community falls under the rural definition as defined under the federal program that was. Uh, Rural Health Transformation Grant. So a large portion of what was submitted in the state application includes funding for. Uh, Block Island Community Health Center uh and many other health programs. There are twelve proposals in the actual application by the state in no preference order. Item number eight was the um, uh, I think it's called the Block Island Health Services Enhancement Proposal. And so it includes a number of initiatives focused on emergency management, technology and facility upgrades. Uh, the Health Services Community Center focused on community care programs of home-based care, aging-in-place initiatives. Establishing of what they call a national program called PACE, which allows for individuals to receive. Health benefits and health services in their own homes. Uh, along with community health uh programs that are established in, it would be the health center here. Um, staffing at the Community Health Center through residency programs established through um partnerships with. Other community health centers. In this case, I think it's Thundermuth, Thundermuth Health Center that has a residency program for primary care. Which would be partnering with the Block Island Community Health Center for having residents come and work at the facility. There's a component for their dental residency program there. So all of this comes under a dollar amount request of, I think. Seven point two million dollars uh was requested specifically for Block Island Community Health Improvement Program. So the good news is, in the first go around of that twenty-five billion dollars that's available. It's almost guaranteed that every state will get um money in their application. Remains to be seen how much comes from Rhode Island, but given that Block Island is the only community that falls under the federal definition. Feel very strongly there will be something available for uh, for the community and some of the health services. So on the positive side, we're monitoring that. We worked, I worked very closely with the Department of Human Services, the Department of Health and the Governor's Office. When they were seeking some input for different programs that would be available. We worked with the Community Health Center in looking at partnership, particularly for the residency program and partnering with Thundermuth Health, Health Center. So. Some good news, we'll wait to see. It's about four weeks from today when that decision on paper is to be. Uh, decided uh at the federal level. So. Uh, we're waiting probably until a little after the first of the year, we'll have some report on what was accepted in the Rhode Island application. So some good news there and I, I feel positive that uh there'll be something good to report that comes out of uh what the application by the state.
And I jump off Jeff, two other things I, sorry, we're going back to what I just said. Uh, two other things that probably should have been brought up. Two other things that probably should have been brought up that hopefully are good news. I think they're good news because it's more revenue for the town, but. Um, the short-term rental, which was always an issue, it's like, as I mentioned, this working group that we uh convened. Um, was ta- uh, was taxing just individual rooms, not whole house. That's now been changed. And the second thing is the um hotel tax uh went from one percent to two percent for, for local communities. So um, there was a belief that.
While we're on this, because I'm wrong every time I make an assertion about this, um, what do we get up?
So it's simple, it's, it's very simple. You get all of it. You get all of it. So if someone is uh staying at um a three hundred dollar a night hotel. Uh, they would basically pay three dollars extra under this new tax. So before it was one, it was, it was one percent, they paid three dollars. So they're going from paying three dollar local tax on a three hundred dollar a night to another three dollars, so it'd be six. So essentially, you would go to your fiscal office and just say, can you double, what did we make last year and double it? Amy, am I correct?
Yeah, so.
On whole house as well?
No, that's.
Yeah. Right.
We obviously don't have a great estimate for the whole house.
That's a trick, that's, that's a trickier thing because the collection is not done by the community.
Yes.
Yeah, so talking about the one percent is really easy, just double it and it goes a hundred, a hundred percent to you. And, and you know, um, uh. I don't think there was anyone that saw it as much as it did turn as it, it, uh, to tourism and so forth. Especially in light of some of the cost of meals and so forth.
When did it take effect?
Uh, it takes effect, it takes effect, um, January one. The uh state, just so we all know, the state. The state property tax, we're not gonna use the other word, that takes place uh July one of twenty-six. So we have six months before implementation to work on it this year. Which will segue into what else you need from us this year.
And that's still in its early stages. They haven't even come out with a system, how they would collect or anything, I believe, on that.
On that, um, on the. On the statewide tax, yeah. So it's, it's, yeah, so the, the only thing that in the legislature, they start to do rules and regulations, but it's. You tax after the one million, uh, two dollars and fifty cents per five hundred. So if you have a house that's worth one million five hundred dollars, you're gonna pay two dollars and fifty cents. But no one has that, so people, for, two, it's two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents per five hundred.
Over a million.
Over a million. So if you have a half, if you have a two point, if you have a two million dollar house, the first million is not touched, but then you gotta pay two dollars and fifty cents. For fi- every five hundred dollars.
So you're saying.
Five hundred thousand or five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars.
So, so this would take place, this would be uh effective in July, say. So you're saying there's time between now and then, if it's successful for. A change, repeal, whatever it might be.
Delay.
Or delay, right, delay. So there's a possibility that, you know, with the push, um, that, that can be done before it's implemented.
Yes, great. And I think it's important for us to work with all of you and others from these other communities because. I don't think anyone here disagrees, but there are people that live in some of the uh, um. Urban communities that will argue, I really don't care that your house is, you bought it, you got it through a family. We have to deal with that, unfortunately. It's, it's wrong, but that's the.
I get that, right? Like, poor us, right? But like.
But it's not poor, because again, yeah.
But it's still people, it's, you know, where people home, live and or live part of the year.
I think most people that live off island, I can speak for myself, have houses that I could never afford now, just like I'm twenty years ago.
Um, can you, can you explain again the whole house tax? The, the rental tax, that's the whole house rental tax, because that one is really. Right. Affecting us as well.
So on the, there were, uh, there was, uh, there's a, there's a taxes that are applied. There's the, the hotel tax. A sales tax and then a, I believe it's a. A hospital, I mean, what's occupancy tax, right?
So it's the, the five percent existing hotel, the one percent prior local hotel.
Tax.
Uh, the seven percent sale.
Sales, right. So previously applied was just the seven percent and the one percent hotel tax to the whole house rental. Now they're including those two plus the six percent occupancy tax that was not levied on. Whole houses was only levied on individual rooms under hosting platforms. So, so the bottom line, you're going, we're basically going from um eight percent to fourteen percent. Correct. Or what's six, thirteen?
Thirteen percent.
Well.
Well, the other.
Then you have the other one.
Right, so it's fourteen.
Yes.
Yep. Did you look confused?
So there was a tax before that was six percent on rooms?
So the way it was structured, correct, because I think originally when hosting platforms, which you, if you use the brand name Airbnb. It was, it only really developed for individual rooms when it first came up.
Right.
I have a room that's available in my house and not using, um, you rent it on this platform.
Right.
And expanded as it grew, I mean, innovative people said, now I can put my whole house on there. And it wasn't, that wasn't how the model was originally built. And then once, so the state looked at it and says, we have to tax the individual rooms, just like we do individual rooms that is in a hotel. So it included that full thirteen percent tax. When people started renting their full homes on those same platforms. That, that occupancy piece was left out. It was just the sales tax and the hotel tax. And now the, the state is catching up with probably what they should have caught up five years ago. Um, to take a look at, most of the rentals on there are full house homes. So we need to tax it just like we were on the traditional hotel.
But obviously not just on platforms, like a real estate agent renting a home by the week is obligated to collect this.
Any house that is rented fully for, um, I think it's less than. Six months.
And that's six percent?
Correct.
And then Jeff, explain that, you know, uh, the process, the state collects it and then they just serve it back. And that's been one of the issues, right?
Yeah, how much do we get back from that?
So I believe on that piece, you get the, you get the hotel tax, which is the two percent.
Yep, yep.
And then we get five, uh, twenty-five percent of the five percent, which is. Parallel to the hotel tax.
Correct.
So one of the issues we were working through in this session last winter, spring was. It seemed like this was going to pass either way, but we were really pushing to make sure there was a local element to that distribution. Is that?
Yeah, so just so we're wondering, so twenty-five percent went back to the town, twenty-five percent went to the Department of Commerce. Forty percent, I'm gonna get, so definitely twenty-five percent to commerce, twenty-five percent to town. I think the local tourism council's got fifty percent. Forty to fifty, I, I, I'm gonna be inaccurate about that.
Very interesting formula and then throw in Newport gets more.
And does, does the, does the Providence Convention Bureau still get a piece of that? Is that what they get a piece of too?
Every local tourism convention bureau gets.
We're not experts on it, but I can tell you, there's been, there's been a fight between tourism councils and, you know, the province won at one point. I, I don't know, to express what I don't know, I'm not gonna do that, because I, I don't want someone to say, but I do know that. As Amy said, the town gets twenty-five percent back, Department of Commerce gets some, and that was kind of the argument, why is Department of Commerce getting? Money on this? We're trying to re, trying to, we weren't going after the tourism councils, uh, but why was it Department of Commerce? They were actually trying for, on a, they actually testified in favor for, for getting higher percentage.
But this is what the real estate agents are on fire about right now because it's a giant jump.
It is.
That's a big jump.
It is a jump. Um, we actually, Jeff has the stuff, we can get it to you because we did it for this working group. Um, but it's not uncover, uh, it's not what you, Connecticut, Massachusetts are, are head of Rhode Island in terms of they've been doing this for years. I think. No, I don't mean it, I'm just. You win the, you win the debate on that, I can't voice it. So um, I, I, I've spoken to Amy, Jeff and I have spoken to Amy, but we'd love to hear, you know, the session will begin. January, whatever that day is, I think it's fifth, whatever that first Tuesday is um for the year. And um, let me just say this in advance, uh, I mentioned that the budget will come out January fifteenth, the governor will submit his budget on Thursday, January fifteenth. Uh, right after that, the House and Senate Finance Committees will hear the testimony from his department heads justifying the. Uh, proposal he's put forward. The governor has the luxury of having revenue numbers from November, but will not have luxury in May. So the budget could be very good because more revenue is coming in, caseload is down in May, or it could be worse because. Money's not coming in through sales tax, through um, uh, uh, gam- uh, lottery revenue, through um, uh, uh, income tax. Uh, or it could be ahead of it and so forth. So uh, the other thing is, the elec- the election is this year, and I know in previous years, they want to get out as quickly as possible. So the last two years, the budget has passed, um, I think last year passed the twenty-first of June. Uh, used to go nine more days, ten more days, it doesn't seem a lot, but it really is. And they usually try to finish the session when they finish the budget. So we really have a window of about five and a half months. We're gonna have to move really kind of quickly. Um, Jeff and I had a, uh, uh, meeting with the state reference state senators, say, we'll have. Uh, legislation for you as soon as possible. And um, I know this a lot for both um, uh, Amy and Millie and stuff, but. Uh, we have in council resolutions, will make things a lot easier and quicker and smoother.
So what is the ideal timeframe for legislation due from your perspective?
They, they, uh, they are more flexible with the town stuff, but from our perspective, uh, uh, we'd like to get as much as, again, I don't want to put Jeff on the spot of me, but I would say. Mid, mid-January to end of January.
Yeah, I would say end of January would be the latest we want to, I mean, we, like, like Rick mentioned, municipalities do have the flexibility. Outside of the deadline of introducing things after the deadline, but you know, to move things through the process, end of January, the ideal.
I, I always say that because, you know, there's things will come up after this meeting and it's good that we have a general idea, timeframe.
Yeah. So what are the. If you're looking for issues there.
I think we've talked about this statewide property tax enough, um, but moving on to the next one in terms of. In terms of relabeling things, it's on here as deer mitigation, but I think we're really gonna start to shift and call that more of a tick-borne illness. Um, issue. I did share the resolution that the council passed on Monday night with Rick and Jeff, so they are starting to get a sense of. Um, what we're looking for on that, and I think the phrasing you use, Bill, of moving beyond management.
Right.
Um, it really encaps- encapsulates that really well. I think. It may be premature to talk about what legislation looks like, but hearing from the council on that topic will help fill in some of the gaps for you all.
So we. We have, I think it's fair to describe a public health crisis that, that uh, uh. Comes from ticks and ticks feeding on deer. And it is, um. It's reached a point of really being intolerable. Uh, and DEM, to their credit, has been. Uh, as you guys know, always really accessible, the Terry Gray's been terrific. But frankly, we're gonna have to implement tools, approaches. Uh, that are not um consistent with herd management. Uh, we're not talking about herd management or, or uh maintaining uh an active recreational hunt. Uh, and uh, because it's, it's a public health issue for us, unlike what it is really for anybody else in the state. Now, uh, the council uh passed a, a resolution the other night. Really focused on this public health issue and really focused on uh engaging with the Department of Public Health, engaging uh with DEM. Uh, engaging with the Department of Public Health, engaging uh, with DEM. I happen to think that it may be better for us and easier for DEM. If the statute basically recognizes that Block Island is gonna have to have its own rules because of its public, public health problem. Now, I don't, I don't know that for sure, but I, but I think, you know, Bill and I were kind of alluding to this the other night when we were going back and forth. And I think Nancy and I in sidebar, at, at some point, um. At some point, DEM may not want to have, let's see as an example. They may not either have the tools or want to establish the precedent that their rules allow baiting. For example, uh, y- you know, th- that's probably something we're gonna have to do here. Um. So, I, I think it's, I, I, I think it's important to talk to you guys about it and put it on your radar. Because as we go through this uh, process of talking to uh, uh. Administration folks, whether that's, you know, it's. Up to you, do, do you start with the governor? Do you start, do you start with the Department of Public Health? Do you start with DM? You know, I think we have to have a strategic con- conversation about this. Um, but it would not surprise me if we get to a place where uh, DM says no. Or Department of Public Health says, we don't have those tools, or you know, what have you, and um. This is vital enough for the community that we are going to want to speak to the legislature about it. So.
Part of the issue is, you know, could be mirrored on our, our, our taxi ordinance, where the, the town, New Shore. Um, gets to our, our own, you know, so just. Take us completely out, you don't have to worry about the rest of the cities and towns and what they want to do, just give us the tools ourselves. And is there an active uh, Department of Public Health person involved in any legislation up there, or is?
So there is, there's a, there's a gentleman who um, is the uh, I, I don't know what his title is, but he handles all the legislation. For the Department of Health at the State House, and Jeff and I have worked with him numerous times per year. He comes over and says, um, we support this legislation and so forth. So he would be the person that we contact, his name is Neil Hilton. Neil would be the person we contact, he would set us up with the right people at Department of Health to have a conversation with representatives from the island. And then he would be the one that we would work on with the legislation, and at the end of the day, who comes to the committee and saying. Department of Health has worked with the town of Block Island, we're in favor of this. Whatever that may be, and our jobs to make him say that, you know.
And, and I think that we need to be, this has to be more drastic, we're in the, in the past, you know, we've always said, oh, why can't we, we bait and, and so forth. And all that, when you think about it, comes back to uh, management, and that's what the DM's role is, and I respect that.
Yes.
Um, so I think that, that i- if we look to, like Nancy had said, uh, what was done with the, um, with the cabs. I'm sure at the time when that was put through for the PUC allowing the town to regulate it, um, we're unique from that end of it, so since. It's, you know, one area geographic and everything else, I think it might have more uh, more legs than, say, a community that borders another community with properties and hunting and so forth. So, but I think it needs to be directed to the point we're saying, is we want to be able to, you know, do these rules or regulations ourselves within that. Um, but.
Well, no, I, I would say that um, we've had two instances in the last two years, or three years. Where what you're saying is exactly what we need to do, one was the housing issue, uh, obviously, we, we changed that definition. It uh, was supposed to work, we have to tweak it again, and the second thing was what Jeff just talked about earlier on the Water District. Um, the utility that, that didn't, Jeff mentioned they were joint together, Jamestown and um, Block Island. His effort got, got rid of them, and Jamestown did not get included, so there, there are instances where. Where they recognize the uniqueness of Block Island, and this is a place where we can do the same.
There's, the, there's, uh, Bill said this, but I think it bears repeating, there's real urgency to this. We have, you guys have read about AlphaGal, if you heard, you know. W- we now have a significant and growing number of cases where people's, the rest of people's lives. Are really severely impacted because of a tick-borne illness.
You read that article in the New York Times?
Yes, yes.
The guy was eating a burger.
Yes.
Two hours after.
Yes, and that is happening here, I mean, thank goodness, not uh, not fatally, but uh.
But we have numbers.
But we have, yes, and, yeah, and I, and I did, I spoke, I called Nettie Rose Cooley uh, yesterday. Uh, the, the woman who's the executive director of the Medical Center, CEO, whatever, um. Uh, basically to get her uh, engaged and focusing on collecting data, collecting, cuz I. You, you know, uh, let's say we have, I'm making this up, twenty-two cases of AlphaGal, well, we had four last year. So this is, this is really about trend and about whether we can intervene to change that slope. Because if we don't, we're gonna end up like another article in, in Martha, about Martha's, and then, and Thomas about Martha's Vineyard, where. They now have this growing number of uh, vegan restaurants and stores, because there's, there's so much of this AlphaGal. We've, we've, we've gotta do this, and, and none of the facts that weigh into our thinking about deer. Are consistent, as Bill says, with what DEM's appropriate mission is on deer, it's a different mission, right?
And, and I think with the, with the funding that's gonna be cut, DEM is also gonna be, uh, their funding is gonna be, so for the, that's only gonna, um, you know. Uh, you know, and um, well, only their enforcement, everything else, so I think when you factor all these things in. Um, while I don't expect the EM to, you know, to change what, what their mission is, what it is. But I'm hoping that we can present, like I said, the case from the health part, that we get less resistance than we might have gotten in the past.
Just, yeah, just carve, just carve a sign, you know, and, and leave it at that, and the, the, the issue is, I mean. There, we started with, with Lyme disease, and then it was Babesiosis, and then the AlphaGel, going forward. This will ultimately impact our tourism, and tourism revenue to the state should be very important.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, that's so true.
Just to, just to, I don't wanna, you know, we can talk about this offline a little bit more in detail, but. Under DEM's authority right now, what is a deer mitigation plan? Is it just hunting?
More hunting days.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I, and I. I'm sure if Dylan were here, he would, he would have others, but, I mean, I'll give you, I'll give you a, uh, uh, a, uh. An anecdote from when DEM was here, we talked about baiting. And DEM said, we do not permit baiting because of um. Uh, chronic wasting disease uh, gets spread when.
Threatens the other wildlife?
No.
No, with the deer.
Where the deer gather, and y- you know, I, I get that if it's whatever, um, Burlville. Uh, you, you know, where you don't want the spread of that disease. We have an isolated deer population that does not have chronic wasting disease. It's, uh, uh, you know, again, I get the macro policy, but we have, uh, we have a totally different set of circumstances.
So the majority, the majority of theirs is by hunting, and that's how they do their management, you know, um. And so unfortunately, fortunately, I said, unfortunately, the dynamics out here of houses and so forth has changed, so, you know, the more hunting you have, there's other. There's, there's other, not only enforcement, but there's other um, safety issues that happen from that end of it, so. Bad question to ask.
Too many. I mean, it's gotta, you don't even, you don't even know.
Well, we have. We actually have a reasonable uh, sense of how many deer are taken because of our uh, uh, uh. Deer tail reimbursement program. Uh, uh, and about four hundred.
Yeah.
Removed.
But no, it's not moving the needle.
So, that's what I'm saying, it's not really moved.
No.
It's appropriated.
And then. An example, the DEM supposedly did some sort of a file last, last winter, we still haven't gotten the results of that, right? You know, and we've asked a million times, let's, you know, if we could start with the baseline, and even if we don't have a baseline.
It's.
You know, there's too many.
Real problem.
Yeah, but, but you know, you had mentioned before about not getting tied up with the, with the, the Taylor Swift, the, with numbers. We don't, so what happens here is, we don't wanna get tied, we get tied up with how many deer there are, there aren't, how many, and that gets shifted over. I think that's where we need to keep this focus.
On the tick-borne.
On, yeah, on the health, the health, exactly, to that end of it, because the other is subjective from that end, understandably, you know, but the reality of is. We're not anywhere near where that extinction is, where we can have that discussion, we need to stay focused where we are.
Yeah, I recognize the fact that getting rid of the deer is not necessarily gonna eliminate the deer ticks, but it's a start. You know, and we've gotta start someplace, because it's just escalating year after year.
Yeah, and keeping in mind that, like, I know two people who were diagnosed last week, and one's a high schooler, so. That's a, the high schooler who's not gonna be able to eat meat and potentially not dairy for the rest of their lives, that's a lot to be laying on people. And that is only people who live here, we don't know who came to Block Island to look for a glass float. And, or rented a house for a week and um, went to the beach and went home and was sick and didn't make the connection.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right, like, didn't make the connection, like the guy in the New York Times article, did, they did not make the connection between. He got sick from eating a burger and died to, why did he get sick until much later? So, you know.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully, he didn't come to Black Island earlier. But, um, but it was, it, and that's how people are having to live now, it's, it's a very big deal.
This is not a fooling around thing, this is.
And from a management perspective, DEM has been pressuring us to do weekend hunts. We get pushed back all the time on the weekend hunt idea, and that, but that's a management tool, that's not, you know, this elimination tool.
Right, and we'll talk about that as a community. You know.
And as Bill pointed out, I mean, e- everyone's, everyone's budgets are gonna get cut. Whenever we have, used to have a discussion with DEM about weekend hunting, we kept saying, well, you've gotta bring people out here. You know, you've gotta bring your agents out here, then if we're gonna have weekend hunting, they've never done that, they have never been able to afford doing that. They're certainly not gonna do it going forward.
Yep.
You'll be, uh, you'll have your ears talked off about deer, whenever you want.
Ready to go.
Actually, not about deer, and, and, you know, Bill makes a good point, about the public health risks that we're facing there. That's, and I, you know, I mean, I.
Have to change the matter.
Well, well, and, and I, you know, we, we, we say this, like. When you know what the numbers are here and what people talk to you about. If this were happening, if there were an environmental factor. Responsible for the, the kind of infection rate that we have here in any other town, people's heads would blow up. You know what I mean? It's.
Yeah.
This is our uh, underground, leaking underground storage tank, you know?
Yeah.
Amy, what should I talk about next?
Uh, DOT.
DOT. I knew it was coming, baby.
I would like to talk about that, and now, both May fourth and the council have had recent updates, so we don't need to get into all the weeds. But just to identify it on everybody's radar that things seem to be moving forward. And at any moment, we will be calling on you and our legislators to step in, um, if it seems necessary before the end of the session. So it's, I would say it's very high on our priority list, at the moment, we need help.
Yeah, I, I just wanna address one thing, Amy and I had a really good conversation about this, and Amy just said it, you know, we're gonna sit and wait. Um, when I say sit and wait, January third, you know, they said they would get back to us. There was a comment made um, by DOT, the director, that we should seek appropriation for it. Uh, through the congressional delegation, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, you should not be seeking an appropriation. Through something that's responsibility of DOT. You have other needs, we can talk about them, um, but that's a responsibility of DOT. And simply, it would be a waste of your efforts, and candidly, would take money away from what DOT should be doing. So I, that's the one thing I do wanna be on record on doing that, I understand why the director would say that, he wants to move this thing quickly, I, you know, I don't think there was anything. Acrimonious about it, but the fact of the matter is, an appropriation now could take eighteen months, because as we know. There are appropriations that Senator Rita Carrion that have been eighteen months, this is something that has to be done by the state. Um.
It's the gosh darn building.
Yes, Jeff and I will.
I don't wanna say gosh darn.
Jeff and I have, Jeff and I will be with the governor next Thursday. Thursday, this is the only issue that we're bringing up to him, because of the, uh, where we are, so, yes.
Great.
Yeah.
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 But the fact that, you know, Rhode Island's not gonna get any appropriations through, uh, if, uh, with the current.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Issue from the Washington.
Yeah, right.
Recalibration.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would say those are, those to me are our top three priorities at the moment. Um, we have some other things on the list, and I don't know if people wanna talk about those individually, but that includes the idea of. Enabling legislation to regulate car rentals, um, courtesy vehicles, some of the other topics we've talked about. But I don't know that we've reached consensus on those in the same way.
I was gonna say, on the, on the, on the car rental, um, you know, I've kind of flipped back and forth when, with, when we hear from our attorney. You know, are we opening this and so forth from that end of it, so, from my, I, I would need a little more, a little more before we're. At least for me, before we uh, give marching orders as a direction, I don't know how the rest of my council members feel.
Uh, that, that's, that's how I feel uh, about it, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure on any of those topics kind of. A, necessarily where I am, and B. Given how serious some of the other things are, you know, I'm always, I'm always really concerned about. You know, you, you uh, you ask for uh, th- three cars and a can of Coke. And legislators are terrific, it's like.
But we got you that can.
You, you know, uh, so, um.
Let me say on this, I know there's a lot of deliberation on this.
Yeah.
Jeff mentioned the end of Ja- uh, Ju- uh, January, which makes sense, this is an issue that we can address.
Right.
As time goes on, I think we can walk and chew gum, and I think. Can never promise anything, but I think these are all achievable goals, the, the, the three that we talked about. DOT probably being the most difficult, that's not a legislative piece, but um, you know. Tick-borne stuff, that definitely, and obviously, we're working on the uh, state tax, but uh, in property tax, but I do think this is something that can happen.
Like, who, who chairs the transportation?
They don't have it.
They don't have one, it's all done through finance?
Finance.
Here's the reason I'm asking, not because I.
The issue might fall under judicial.
Not because I don't know any of the people, but I was literally driving by there, driving by that building this morning. And if you drive up from town, and you look at that, what would that be, the east facing, east facing uh, wall? Um, someone, some legislator should see a picture of that. Y- y- you know, it's sort of like a, one of those, this is the state maintenance garage. This, this is, this is not like some, you know, it's, it's really crazy.
It's out of sight, out of mind is what it is.
It's, you know, definitely, but, but that's why I was asking that, cuz I was sort of driving by thinking. I almost wanna stop and take a picture of that wall, because it's like the windows are falling, right, Mike? Uh, I mean, it, it's. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of legislators, you know, so, so it's not just, oh, Block Island wants a new maintenance garage, it's, first of all, it's the. States maintenance garage.
I might just send pictures, I know there's been conversations, uh, I was, I was happy that it got to the point where at least the DOT director told Amy. We're moving on it, I'm not saying it will be moving, at least it's on his shoulders, and.
Yeah.
Let's be very candid.
Yeah.
He's a very busy person right now, and he knows that every, just everything he says and so forth, he's gotta be careful of, so I was very encouraged.
Think he'd wanna win.
I, I, well, I'm saying, I think I was very encouraged that he's acknowledged this, and he knew and so forth, so. Um, but on the courtesy vehicles and so forth, we've heard from you, we've heard, the car, not from you, but we've heard from Amy, same with the car rentals, ready to go. Um, those things can be definitely managed, and I, I, I personally, when you get to where you need to get to, I, I would. I, I, I would, I don't think it's a problem to, to tackle these issues, I, I don't. You know, especially, there's no, it's, it's more on your shoulders, this legislation, doesn't affect the state's budget, doesn't affect. Other areas, so, so, don't feel like, uh, this, it's not gonna, you know, and, and I know there's a lot of stuff going on, I mean. The, the, the advent of, not advent, but the uh, golf carts, the rentals of uh, uh, scooters. You know, the Jetsons that we kind of all laughed about when we were kids is happening, you know, people are, people are on these uh, things and so forth, so.
Yeah, do you think the state is gonna do anything about e-bike regulation? Speaking of New York Times articles, you guys saw that article this weekend, right?
Yeah.
Scared.
It is scary.
You know, it's interesting, Keith, I mean, there's, there's a lot of issue, because it's hard to define some of these e-bikes, cuz there's so many different variations.
I know, yeah.
I think that's the challenge. I think that's the challenge. I read something recently too. You may see some push from the insurance industry to take a look at, you know, how these are being regulated or lack of regulations because there's significant injuries now.
Do you see the fatality rate for, uh, e-bike accidents?
Uh, and, and, you know, the, the speeds that some of these bikes that are not operating on streets but are on bike paths going thirty miles an hour.
Yeah.
Uh, without the proper equipment for riders and things like that. So there may be other industries that are taking a look at this. They may drive the issue to force more regulations. But I think there's such a variation out there of, you know, pedal control versus self-acceleration versus speed, you know, modifications that they made to some of these things that it, it's hard to, to grab. It, it certainly needs to be addressed because you're seeing more and more and you're seeing not only, you're seeing operators that are not licensed, many on the youth side that are operating vehicles that are sometimes going as fast as traditional motorcycles where they would need a regular license to drive. So.
So I guess that, you know, our, our interest at this point would be if anything, if any legislation is drafted and permitted, let us know.
Yeah, really, really important.
Crack that completely.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of our job is to not only be proactive, but also let you know what's going out there. Because there's things that police, cities and towns don't think are, don't think affect them, but I know it affects.
Yeah.
And I think they have a larger policy discussion from island-centric that you need to take a look at with, does it make sense, whether it's car rentals, motorized bikes versus what your current modes of operation and rental systems are? Is there a benefit to allowing certain modes over others that you want to incentivize? Whether it's traffic flow, whether it's injury related, there's a lot of other factors I think that can go into how you want to take a look at what you need to regulate and what you'd rather prefer as the mode of transportation. If we're going to have, you know, start to take a look at that.
Sure. Well, let, you know, we, we don't want to lose sight of the fact too, that some of those decisions depend on the state of our roads on this island, you know?
Unfortunately, it usually takes a, a tragedy to get some late, some legislation and state-wise. That's probably what is what's going to end up happening.
So true.
Well, and sort of related to that, we haven't discussed this at all. It's not really a town issue, but I think I spoke to you last year about there was that legislation um, that would have allowed teenagers to take, uh, uh, driver's ed online. And I feel like that's a really important thing for our kids to be able to take that online, not have to in- incur the expense of going to the mainland and it's a lot of trouble for parents to take their children off island for that class. So I knew it didn't pass last year, but that would, that's one I would be interested in. I, I, I I don't think we have.
We'd be more than happy to engage you in that process.
Yes, we.
If that comes up again.
Passed the House two years in a row, hasn't passed the Senate, um, but, uh, the council, if they feel strong enough, uh, we, uh, a resolution could potentially help move that though.
Where, where was the pushback on it?
Pushback is, uh, for, so the pushback is this, uh, uh, there is, I think Kipper says, there is a, a number of, so the, uh, Community College of Rhode Island has been a big partner. Community College of Rhode Island has been a, a, a leader, does a good job.
Yeah.
Uh, but they are strongly, they strongly believe in, in classroom. Uh, when during, when COVID happened, state was allowed to, to do it because of the COVID issue. They realized that uh, it was more convenient for not only, uh, people who live in Block Island, but of those whose kids have jobs who play sports and may do, be in the theater and so forth. And it worked. Massachusetts continued it up until, uh, this year. They just got rid of it after a couple of years, but there's twenty-three states in the country that have it. Um, and, um, the pushback I think has been, uh, the old guard of teaching versus the new guard of teaching.
You can take physics online out here, but you can't take truckers.
I have, uh, some fantastic testimony by an expert on this the last five years.
So the o- the only other thing, and I'm not quite sure whether it's just monitoring, um, Josh Cartwright was, was really hot on affordable housing last year and was going through all sorts of machinations to change laws. Some of those things, you know, worked fine for Providence and Cranston and Warwick. But the way they impact here or even, you know, I, I mean, South County is, is looking at it also. So there's been some pushback because it impacts, you know, water, sewer, um, just, we have, we have zoning ordinances that work. Um, we're, we're doing a lot for affordable housing, but we don't need these sweeping uh, changes that are coming that really detrimentally impact us far beyond what's.
And, and, you know, the, the, the important part of what you're saying, we, we have what I would argue is a more progressive uh, five thirteen, uh, A D U, uh, uh, process than the state has that we worked on for eighteen months to put together. And it's, it's not clear whether we're going to have to ask the legislature to sanction that. You know what?
So I'm ready to answer it, but I don't know, uh, I know James is on it, I know James well, but, um, I think, uh, he could probably speak as well as anyone on this because the communities in South County are taking legal action. So well, I, I think it's as good as to monitor what's happened legal, legally as it is what's happened.
And we're not a part of, uh, of appealing any of this stuff. Honestly, the one that sticks in my craw most of all is the one i- is the one about the accessory dwelling units where, you know, we've had whatever, a dozen applications since that.
Yeah, and we didn't explicitly include it almost because the, the the number of zoning changes
Yeah.
that we are still understanding the impacts of are so great, um, that it's hard to quantify what our ask would be. And you guys will tell us, but it's unlikely that any of those will get, that will be successful with any carve-outs.
Sure.
Um, now that doesn't mean we might show up at your doorstep at the last minute to say, you know what? We've figured out one that is really important and we'd like to pursue it. Um, but the magnitude of those changes in zoning over the last couple of years have been material, definitely.
There's been a, there's been a big push on this and certainly Block Island isn't going to be a carve-out, but just an arrogance.
They're never.
I guess my question to you would be, uh, is there any sense that there's some, um, some communities getting together for some pushback collectively to the group? Because I personally don't think individually it's going to be done from that end of it. And if, um, have, have you sensed that from, from what you have?
So councilman, there are a few communities. I know for a fact that Tiberton is taking a look at it. I know Narragansett's been on the front line taking a look at there's some other communities in South County. So I think there is, uh, um, an effort, whether or not they've communicated together to try and look at it from a, a group of communities that are concerned and try and propose something as a, a larger, you know, entity that is showcasing similar communities that are having some adjustments or challenges with the, the state-led affordable housing, sort of issues and, and zoning, lack of a better term, that has moved through the legislature over the last few years. I know that a few of them, and speaking with some of their representation at the State House, are looking at individual, whether they pursue it on a municipal or they take a look at it as a larger community block uh, remains to be seen, but I'm privy to those conversations and have had some with, you know, the representatives for those communities. So we will certainly monitor and keep you abreast of anything that's going on where communities are taking a look at. Either they're proposing a carve-out that might get absorbed into a larger, you know, community effort on multiple communities sharing the same concerns. And if it works, you'll.
Yeah, if you see bills that have that opportunity.
We can relay that to all of you and see if it, if factors, as Amy said, it's probably getting your heads around how many different issues are impacting your local ordinances is a challenge, but, uh, there are communities I know that are going to be submitting legislation.
And we, uh, we have to be very careful because there are the exclusionary com- communities that we don't want to be associated with.
Hundred percent.
You know, we have, we're working on.
We're trying to make this happen. That's, that's the thing that's frustrating.
I think that one of the things that's frustrating is all this money's become, I've been talking to, you know, uh, Mark McGuire and Sidney Pappas. Uh, the island doesn't qualify for that money. So you're saying you need to comply with every, all the other towns, but when it comes to actually accessing money.
Yeah, right. Yeah. 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 Anyway.
Yeah.
All right, we've whined to you for an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Let me just say, we, it's been a pleasure, uh, working with all of you. Look forward to a good year this year and, uh, you're always welcome up to the State House because your voice is better than Jeff's and I. When the time is appropriate and think you need to be up there, we'll tell you, but.
Please do.
We don't need you, um, to come up there when you don't need to be up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to close, Rick kind of started with the two. It's really been a pleasure working with all of you, Amy, and, and the town itself. Uh, every question we've had when it comes to either, uh, legislation that we think might impact, you know, that you want to be aware of, checking in to see, you know, how we can be active on it. Or questions about proposals that we put forth where we need some moderate modifications or amendments, extremely responsive. Uh, so we appreciate that, especially when we're under the gun and timing to move through the legislative process. Um, I, I have to say, uh, you know, your response time has been uh, stellar when it comes to our needs and addressing in the timelines that we have to work with.
It's important to us.
Yeah, I think these meetings work out well. We did a Zoom meeting last, last year and it was January, February, whatever it was and, um, I think it's beneficial for, it certainly is for me and I think for the.
Yeah, I'd love an early session.
Yeah.
Uh, get together like.
Yeah, so we're. And we can even, Zoom is fine.
The lobbyist boat.
That's the one that passed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item two, discuss implementing paid parking in certain locations. So here's where I am on this. This is not a hill I want to die on. Uh, uh, in my opinion, we have, uh, it feels like we have more cars than we ever have, feels like we have more parking challenges than we ever have. It would, it would, I, I would love to know if it makes even any financial sense, you know, y- 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 you know what I mean? Like, I think, I think we have this, we have this and I certainly do, when, when, I'm including myself in that, we, I'm sort of like, Jesus, we charged. We charged twenty bucks a car.
One leg of that stool, we tried to have that ready for you this afternoon, not there yet. Um, but we are doing that math to understand how many public parking spaces there are and, uh, sort of what a maximum, maximum potential revenue would look like so that we can talk about what the costs are and, and sort of back down.
Yeah, I, I just would like to know that.
I think, um, Neil enumerated all of that, right? If we could get Neil's report back out. I didn't, that was. Neil, when Neil Murphy was on the council with us, he counted every single parking space and where it was and how it was, what the signage was in that area. Um, he, he did pretty exhaustive work on that, be- because I was thinking the same thing. I, I uh, we can't, we shouldn't go into this conversation without real data. But I think it should just be a back burner idea that we don't drop because if we need to move the beach house, if we need to do serious work, you know, in, in that area, it's going to require funding. And there are grants and there, but the town will have to kick in something and I think that would be when you but we need, we need to do information gathering.
And you, you know, I, I think I said this at our last meeting. I don't know what, what you guys think, but, um, I'm actually more bothered by the parking at New Harbor and on Water Street than I am about. You know, when I think about paying for parking, I don't really gravitate instantly to the beach and Cornneck Road. I gravitate to those areas where it's, maybe it's because I'm in New Harbor a lot in the summertime, but it, but it it's looks like an opportunity, but it could just be, it raises twenty-five thousand dollars and it costs us fifty thousand dollars to stop it. You know, you know, I mean, I, I, what do I?
But it, but it's something we should, you know, like we, we can look into in terms of, it, it's very different than like twenty years ago when we looked into it and it would have to be a lot of effort on the clerk's office, right? We don't want to create, but now when you go somewhere, you, you, you pay with a QR code. You go to an, you download an app, you, um, you put in your credit card. It's a very different system. Um, again, I don't think it's like the most important thing we have going on right now, but it's something that we need to keep. Um, there is no parking down and, and it's because people have a lot more cars. People, Americans in general have a lot more cars.
Currently, commercial parking lots are prohibited use?
Yes.
Com- uh, commercial ones.
I believe there are special use permit as opposed to a prohibited use.
Okay, I, I didn't know if it was. If there's someone out there. I mean, there's a couple, couple parking lots. Don't we have the sewer, I guess?
Yes.
Sewer companies there.
Yep.
And that is still, that's leased by another company?
The sewer, sewer company does sublease that, uh, to manage, yes.
Right. It just seems to me there's, there's something diabolical about saying, well, we don't have enough parking, therefore we have to charge for parking. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm missing the, you know, the critical premise.
So the idea behind that would be to have it moving, have the parking moving and monetized.
Well, we've got two, well, we have two-hour parking on, on Water Street, right? I mean, we did that a few years ago. Um, you know, we're going to have signs, you, you're going to present us with something about the, uh, New Harbor in the next couple of weeks, correct?
So I think just in general, um, to Molly's point, the difference between a paid parking program and relying purely on parking enforcement i- is a lot of philosophy and policy. So, um, if you're trying to move people in and out of spaces, then generally the ins- the incentive or disincentive to pay for those spaces helps. It also generates a revenue stream that is not entirely reliant on somebody ticketing. So it's not a penalized system, it's a proactive system. So your collections are, are generally much higher. Um, typically, we don't want to rely on enforcement to generate revenue.
Right.
Um, that's not sort of an alignment of policy. Um, if we're looking to, one, generate revenue and two, move vehicles in and out of spaces, that's where the, you use the monetary part as incentive, just in terms of philosophy.
I, I get, you know, the other philosophy is if you've, if you're going to do that to move cars, there has to be someplace to move them to, or they have to be moving to someplace. And when parking across the, the board is, is a tight issue because the number of cars, you know, I, it just seems like we're spinning our wheels and then we're, we're penalizing, uh, when it, it's not going to really solve anything. But I, I.
So I'm just going to recommend, there is an excellent book I read a couple of years ago called Paved Paradise, How Parking Explains the World. Um, and it was very interesting. Just as like background material on how municipalities and businesses, um, use parking. Um, it was very interesting.
Well, and it's also a question of priorities. I mean, I, we can go back as far as when Norris was insisting that we shouldn't, we shouldn't build the community center and that whole aspect because that would be a great parking lot behind, uh, you know, off of Weldon's Way. I mean, I opt for the housing beyond that, but.
Anyway, Amy, we're looking forward to that report. I have a motion to adjourn.